We'll call the January meeting of the Amory City Council to order. And have the Pledge of Allegiance. And. Eric, let me just send the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of America as one nation, and for the good of all.
Thank you. And then the roll call.
Marx.
Here.
And Summerin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Van Blercom.
Yeah.
Elkin.
Here.
Plannum.
Here.
Tanner.
Here.
Okay, welcome. Do we have any public comments? Anyone that wishes to address the council? Is that better? Any public comments?
Yes, I have a couple.
Okay.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm Scott Carlson. I don't have my hat on today, so probably don't recognize me as as easily, but I own 200 Donatella Street. I just have a couple of comments on the SEM documentation for the water treatment plant. It looks as if they gave us two viable options, right? One, to upgrade the current facility. Two, to build a new one. It's interesting to me that they wrote a conclusion in this documentation because a conclusion is not really their job. They're not decision makers. And they didn't consider citizens of Amory. When they wrote their conclusion. You, the council, are the decision makers. And are the people that should be responsible for formulating a conclusion. Your task now is to weigh the pros and cons of each of those solutions. Now, to list a few, upgrade, of course, a pro is it costs less. A con, fifteen plus households will endure loud construction noise for the next few years. A con, noise pollution, air pollution, and light pollution may increase after these upgrades. Those fifteen plus households will have to endure that forever. If these households try to sell, they now have to disclose that they are a non-conforming property. That will negatively impact their sales price. And if we need a significant upgrade again, you may have to start looking at expanding the property, which means buying out places, or you have to look at a new location anyway. Now, those are just some of the pros and cons to an upgrade. I'll let you do the rest there. For a new facility, a con is it costs more. Delays the project. We have to start over with some of our things like submitting to the DNR. Some of the pros, the water treatment plant is not a nuisance. Period. No one will be impacted by the noise, smell, or light. There's room for future expansion, twenty years, forty years, sixty years. We set ourselves up for success. And one of my cons, or one of my pros, sorry, is that no one has to look at the junkyard that you maintain on that property. So again, these are just a few pros and cons. I'm sure you can think of a lot more, but you, the council, need to weigh these pros and cons and figure out which solution is the best. Not always the cheapest solution is the right solution for us in Amory. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have something new to bring to the council, I will encourage that if you've already hashed stuff you've said already.
Oh, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be new. Uh, my crew struck, Scott bought my property back in November. At the last council meeting in December, or after the last council meeting in December, I sent several emails to the mayor and to the council with suggestions on how you might go about raising consensus because this is going to be a very difficult and important decision. As many of you know, I was a CEO at the Medical Center for twenty-seven years. And we had a lot of tough decisions to make. In the process that I recommended is something that we used quite often. And also members responded to my emails, and that was Michaela, nobody else. And I offered assistance in going through the decision-making process using senior executives at the Medical Center who led the Medical Center well often through this number group technique. And in talking with her, she was never contacted by anyone at the city. So it was very disappointing to me that when the council hasn't, it doesn't appear, has done anything as a group to try to reach consensus on this decision, not having taken up any resources or take advantage of any resources that were offered to you. And then finally, going without any living, you know, it would have been nice if somebody were to respond to besides Michaela. I think that's all.
Anyone else? Moving on, item two.
No.
We did not do that. Yes, we can. We have consent of vendor items, city council meeting on December sixth, special council December twentieth, arts parks and recreation November seventh. We're called to look at their minutes, recycling committee November fifteenth, plan commission December twenty-eighth, and resolution oh one, twenty twenty-four discontinuance of a portion of Sundance Street. Move to approve the consent agenda items.
No second vote.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. May further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sord. Now moving on to item number two, wastewater treatment plant presentation from S E H.
Good evening, council mayor, Eric Kane, SCAR of S E H, colleague Jeremiah Lent. At the last council meeting, you had requested that we provide you with a breakdown of the cost increased from roughly a year ago from the facility plan to to now. And apologizing, you're you're receiving this right here at the meeting, but we'll run through some of these numbers and just wanted to share with the council how it gets from the concept of the facility plan stage to the design stage and us where we are. Jeremiah, I think.
All right, thanks, Eric. So a couple of things I handed out, one is the the setback map. I think that was a request from the last meeting as well. And then a memo, as Eric mentioned, with the some of the details of the cost from the opinion of probable construction cost from the facility plan and from the the ninety percent design. So really, on the back of that sheet is kind of the the bulk of the comparison. The line items were broken up a little bit differently between the two documents, but tried to consolidate into kind of some some reasonable categories. And and really, the way that we've got it broken down here is by structure. So we'll just run through those real quickly and can address questions after we we go through those or as we go as well. So looking at the the table one, the cost comparison, the ninety percent design is in the column on the left and then the facility plan on the right. So site work numbers were were pretty similar. We'll run through the structures, the treatment building, structure ten, really, this is the headworks. This is where the flow is is going to come in. This number increased by about seven hundred thousand and largely due to that structure just becoming more larger, more complex as we get into the design. One of the the things that I was going to mention is, you know, I did print off a plan set, which is on the the back table there, and the facility plan, which is sitting next to it on the right. In the facility plan, we're really looking at one sheet of a drawing of kind of conceptually what this is going to look like. And as we go through the design, we're going to that that two hundred pages of of plan sheets and developing that that level of detail to, you know, to a much more significant degree. So you can get into things like that, that structure ten building. And as that increases in size to to fit the equipment in it, that has a cost to go along with it. The next line item is the S B R tank, structure fifteen, which is the most significant increase. And and the biggest part of this is that as we got into design, we we decided, okay, the controls of this treatment system are going to be within the scope of that equipment supplier for the the S B R tank. And so their scope increased by about one point five million dollars because we added that to to their scope. So that's that's the reason for that increase, and those numbers would have been part of the electrical estimate in the facility plan. So that's kind of where those numbers went from. Back up one step and just say, you know, we've talked about cost increases and obviously inflation and and most types of things. The the probably the most expensive kind of parts of construction for the treatment plant are reinforced concrete and electrical components. And and those items have a much higher, have had a much higher rate of increase than the rate of inflation, even looking at a construction cost index for residential, you know, construction. Our structural folks weighed in on the the concrete cost, and that price goes up recently, has been going up by five to twelve percent per quarter for unit price of cast and placed concrete. Similarly, on the electrical side, all of these controls components, the prices are going up at a much higher rate. And and certainly, if you've purchased copper wire lately, you recognize what that, you know, how that has exceeded the cost of other construction materials. And so we're running copper wire, you know, from one end of this site to another. And in, so those those prices increase significantly. Pumping building structure twenty, you can see, is about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we did not have a line item for that in the facility plan. Really, when we looked at that facility plan, we assumed that the the pumps that we're going to put in the structure twenty would be put in a lower level of the existing building. But when we got into design, we found is just the way that that building is constructed, you can't get into lower level without going underneath an at-grade portion of the building to where we needed to get to with with the pumps. And so early in the design, you said, okay, it's it's not feasible. We're going to tear down this building. We tried to get into and and, you know, in order to salvage that lower level and reuse it, it it didn't seem to be feasible. Structures thirty and forty, pretty close to to what we had there. Talked about the administration building, the existing building, the costs of rehabbing that increased. Estimated about five hundred thousand difference from what was in the facility plan. And again, that's getting into those details. And what are we going to salvage? What are we going to replace? As an example, there, the the rotary drum thickener, the UV disinfection system, some of those costs that that were included in that structure. Oxidation ditch removal was not a separate line item in the in the facility plan would have been been included in, we estimated in that site work cost. Again, talked about the electrical. We did include a line item here for water control in the pre-treatment building. That was not part of the facility plan, but something that could be added to the project if if it's something that the the council desires. And then as we go down below that subtotal contingencies and permitting mobilization, those things are factors, percentages that are applied to that subtotal. And so as that subtotal goes up, obviously, those numbers go up. When we're at the facility planning level, we're we're applying, what we applied in this case was a fifteen percent contingency that would include all of those permitting mobilization materials testing line items. And then as we get into the detailed design, a lesser contingency, a lesser percent contingency, which is ten percent, but then separate line items for some of those other things. So that that's kind of the the quick run through on that in terms of what has changed since since we put this facility plan together back in really largely back in in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, that was finalized and submitted to D N R in January of twenty-three. A couple of projects that we include there since. Sorry.
You're good. I thought you were done, and I had a question, but that's that's okay. I'll ask when you're.
Okay, all right. So just one other thing, you know, we did include the a couple of other comparable projects. The bottom of that back page involved one and Oseo that are maybe a few years ahead, one to two years ahead of where the the Amory project is right now. Just to to kind of show that progression from the the construction costs in the facility plan to the ninety percent design to bid prices in that, you know, kind of twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three time period. Those prices have have certainly been increasing. And it's it's not just an S E H thing. It's it's an industry thing. I mean, the nearby communities for the lake, for example, that's that's going through a wastewater treatment plant upgrade. It's had had bids come in at thirty million against the original project scope around twelve million. So certainly something that, you know, these things are becoming more expensive as time goes on in the industry as well.
Michaela. Michaela, you got a question?
Yeah, so I know at the last meeting, when we discussed some of the changes to the cost, part of it was that you encountered things in the design phase that you weren't expecting. Do you anticipate that if we were to pick a new location, that it would be similar as you're entering the design phase, that there might be things that you didn't account for in the original estimate? Or because it's a brand new facility, do you feel like it would be mostly covered in that estimate?
We did, you know, we put together that that estimate, but again, the the, so there's not necessarily site, hopefully not necessarily site-related things that we wouldn't anticipate upfront, but we're, you know, we're putting a price on a design that that hasn't been done yet. And so certainly, there's there's a lot of detail that would still need to be determined at that new site as well. And again, you know, the the cost increases that have to do with with time are going to increase, you know, as we proceed through that design and permitting for that new site as well.
Makes sense. Thank you.
So you're talking about was that the administration building that you're going to be tearing down completely?
No, so we're reusing that that building. But what we found as we got into design was originally, we thought, well, use the lower level of this building because there are some lower levels in there that that house pumps and the the headworks right now. But just the way that building has been constructed and added on to over the years, that the lower level is kind of inaccessible because of the the other processes that have been built.
Inaccess- inaccessible, is it?
Inaccessible, right. I mean, to to dig at and and extend pipes into put pumps in, that type of stuff. Some of that, you know, you you've got, I I don't know, Jeff, how many times that building has been added on to, but you've got, you know, crawl spaces underneath existing floors that have, you know, like galleries that run through them into existing basements right now. It's it's a mess that we decided it wasn't worth trying to tear this apart to reuse.
Ask a question? Go back to the slide that shows Baldwin and Oseo's. Baldwin quote, the bid price came in at roughly low eighteen million.
The low bid was fifteen million.
Treatment plant in Baldwin that we created compared to a new treatment plant in Maine, since Baldwin is about a third larger than.
So their design flows there are probably at least a third, I'm going to say maybe even half again, larger than than what the Amory facility is designed for.
When you gave us the call, you presented a proposal last month, for a new facility with like twenty-six million.
I think that included a lot of the other work to get to that location and the property.
Correct, yeah, exactly. So, you know, a big chunk of that is building the lift station, building the piping to get to that property. And and I think the other, you know, the other piece of it is that was a bid from three, almost three years ago now, that that project would be in that twenty-five million dollar range today, I I would guess.
So it's five-year difference?
Correct, yes, right.
Bid to construction. I'm not sure how it impacts a decision at all, but city staff was able to come across some agreements that have been signed over the years of properties within the five hundred foot setback. I'm not an attorney. I've just started reading these as I arrived tonight. There are three different documents. The first one is from nineteen seventy-nine. I think this one is is pretty clear. And that's agreement between the the city of Amory and the immediate property owners, even Donatella, Stephen Sandrell, Paul Sandrell, Wayne Espargard, that the city will permit further development within the setback and that the property owners, their heirs and signs that existence of municipal waste disposal plant does not now constitute public or private nuisance. Nor will the continued operation, maintenance, operation, enlargement, alteration, addition to or replacement of said municipal waste disposal plant constitute a public or private nuisance. So there there was that signed by the property owners. And there's another one, excuse me, in ninety-two, that was at the time of the expansion to the plant where the engineers at that time, Cedar Corporation, was was working to get a waiver similar to what would process we've done for, I think, today too. And had successfully done that with multiple property owners and within the buffer at that time. So again, don't know how it affects decision on the location of the plant, but the, want to let you know that these exist, yes.
And I I think something, I'm glad that you actually have those documents because something I think that has perhaps been overlooked is that this buffer zone is not a new thing. It's been in existence since the wastewater treatment plant has been there, essentially. Am I correct with that?
So at least seventy-nine.
Yes. So and even if we were to relocate to a new facility, we're still going to have to be doing, we're going to be retrofitting the existing plant in order to get flow of water back and forth. So there is still going to be construction at the existing facility, correct?
Right.
So regardless of what we do, whether we build a new plant or whether we retrofit the existing one, we're still dealing with the same setback that has been in existence since that.
At least seventy-nine, yeah.
Well, that if it moved locations, there would be a lift station at the current location, which would not require the pressures, but something. So it's it's the the plant that we saw treatment facility where the waste is processed. If it was moved to a new location, there would just be a lift station at the current, and then there would not be a setback from there. That's just transferring of the waste.
Just to be clear, the setback is new. You have to read you have to be selling the property. So that is new from the state. Like that didn't exist. Otherwise, our property would have already been zoned as not conforming. So it is changed since seventy-nine.
Changed. It's not new.
Right. It's currently zoned as residential. But with the new ordinance, the statute, you have to be selling the property so that it can't be built on. That's the change. And it happened somewhere in the early two thousand. Unfortunately, you guys didn't know that. That's why residents are sitting. But it did change.
As I read those, I just cursory looked over the top of them, you know, four minutes before we started meeting. It would appear that those, that all the property owners at on that one abstracter that I saw were all all signed off on the the issuance or the beginning of that five hundred foot document. And that might be an issue, you know, nowadays, I don't know if you got an abstract when you bought your property, but I, but you don't get them anymore. I know, I mean, anything that you buy now, you get a certificate of insurance that says, you know, we guarantee your abstract or that your property is free of encumbrance and so on. I'm wondering if maybe this isn't something that's, you know, end up being an issue with. Because I don't think any of the property owners that were there when that was issued, none of those property owners are still there, are they?
Well, the ninety-two one has Mr. Cruz. Okay. We haven't had an opportunity to to bet it, but I don't know if any of these others are are here or not.
It's the zoning that the state has put upon the property that's now required.
I I don't, I don't know what that document says other than, you know. Maybe we need to look at that.
Almost today. I just found all this today, that's why.
I I think the 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 point is that I apologize, John, that John's making is the the D N R requirement now is that there's a zoning ordinance amendment to create the buffer zone. And that's what likely has changed in the code from when these agreements were were put in place. It's not to say that the agreements aren't. You know, valid, but this it's still the DNR is still requiring the city to make this zoning ordinance amendment as an additional. Condition of of building.
So what does what does the agreement specifically state? Yeah.
Well, the early one, I I I read a portion of it. But just that the property owners at that time. You know. That the plant does not constitute a public or private nuisance.
Eric asked a one.
Five hundred foot setback stand for when that was signed, is I guess is the question.
So the one that. Yeah, this. A lot of guys have like multiple letters. Between the the DNR and. The engineers at that time. So it's not as easy to. Full information from.
You know, I'm just asking, does something like that get registered with the register of Ds at the county? You know, it seems to me that should be carried with the. Yeah, no, I I I agree. Right, but it. It is a document.
I don't even remember that doc. I signed it, but I don't remember.
Yeah.
But at the time, my house was already within five hundred feet. Of this of the treatment plant, so waiving the five hundred foot. So what? I'm already there, I'm not gonna move. But that's the only thing that I see in that document is waving five hundred foot. Five hundred foot is not what you're talking about now. Your decision is you. Stay where you are and expand or build something new. If you decided to stay where you are or where the plant is, then as John said, you have to get. The buffer zone implemented. Then five hundred feet come in question right now, it's. What's your decision? Stay and expand or build new somewhere else? Think we're getting sidetracked on this five hundred foot thing.
I don't, we can't really make any. You know. We gotta probably get a legal opinion on this.
I don't think those documents make any difference. I really don't. I mean, there's an agreement at the time to make. Everybody aware of what was going on at the at the at the time. There was no. Change to any zoning which would have. Hurt anybody at that point, so.
From the developer developers that built it.
Right. Right.
That's the one.
Yeah, it is, but what I what I'm agreeing with is the only thing that's changing is. The buffer's been there, but now it takes a zoning change if we're going to implement this location. Which can cause issues for people who have property there.
That's why I think the the signed agreement is. Imperative as to what it says. I mean, if it just says there's a five hundred foot buffer zone. Like Mike said, so what? You know, if it didn't do anything except create the buffer zone, but if but if that. Document created the buffer zone for. Expansion for, I mean, what was the purpose of the buffer zone? So I.
Well, zoning have to take place before we can actually act on anything if we're gonna leave it in the same spot.
Me again in the same spot and the zoning go together. They have to, you have, one has to exist with the other.
To expand on that a little bit, we we did get comments back from DNR on the plans and specifications that we had submitted and and to your point. Eric, the the one of the conditions of approval. Of those plans and specifications will be having the zoning ordinance amendments in place for DNR.
I believe we said at last meeting. Too, but the the process that has now taken place does satisfy the DNR requirements for the the waiver of the five hundred foot setback. So in. The DNR's eyes, you you can move forward. As long as you enact that that.
We are looking at an additional two years if we were to move it. If we decide to move it to a different location, we're looking at. Two years. Longer than if we. Build it at the current location.
Correct, that's that's our estimate, yeah. And part of that is obviously, you know, moving it to a new location means permitting a new outfall to the river. It means finding the location, you know, so I mean, there's still unknowns within that that. But I'd say two years would be the best case scenario, yeah.
And if you build it in your location, in my corrections, was it now a seven hundred and fifty foot setback by going to a new location?
No, it would be five hundred foot. I think the the figure that we showed. At the last meeting had a seven hundred foot. Radius, just to account for the fact that there's a there's something at the center of that. You know, that takes up a two hundred foot radius, that's where the treatment plant is, and then you've got a five hundred foot. Radius around that, that center of the bullseye.
So without going to an attorney to have him interpret where where we're at with that, if that. In that document seems to say that. That. There's no further contest. Depending the. That unless there's some interference with. City ordinance at the time that you're gonna build something new on there. I can see a couple of different ways to interpret that. But I guess my thought is. My thought is it's probably gonna have to be referred to an attorney as far as a seventy-nine document. Remember the constitution is two hundred plus years old. I'm not too worried about the fact that that one's fifty. But I think. I I don't know, what's been going on, you know, what what do you guys think? I think we gotta have our attorney look at it first of all. But I think maybe what the folks are looking for is. Is our take on. On where we would like to. What we'd like to do with this because certainly having more. Non-definitive statements that we don't. Aren't aren't sure at any one particular point. That decision needs to be made, what we're gonna do with it and. Then proceed from there. If it, if we have to resolve, you know, whatever the end result is.
Well, we, you presented all of the documentation on what it would cost for the new facility. Versus the updated for. Big scene, the current one. Plus with the cost of everything that's increasing. It's gonna go up substantially. And I do think we need to make a decision, and I know it's a big decision, but. So the ultimate is, if we do decide to have it at the current location, it's the. The properties that lie in that. Like the four, two or four lots. Have to come to a decision on what we're gonna do.
Well, in the one way that I just looked at, they talked about getting a variance to build on those lots. Getting a variance in the zoning to be able to build on those lots, and they agreed to that. So I don't know if that's something we consider now, is a variance to be able to build on those lots. Knowing full well that they're within the five hundred foot radius, but if that's something that's controlled by the DNR. As far as being, you know, if we, if the city offers a variance.
I think the the difference is that. That's procedure is still there, but the DNR said, or the. As I understand it, is that you can't build a residence in that location. So it does restrict. What you, what's building, what's buildable there. But the other parts of it. Expansion of the current residence, the non, non. Domicile. Buildings and things like that. Have to go, you know, through a hearing and so on and so forth. So I don't.
But who determines that it cannot be built on residence?
That's part of the zoning.
That's part, yeah.
That's what that's what happens when it's zoned under that five hundred foot exclusion.
But that, that one document there seems to state that. You know, if anything was built in there anyway, and I it doesn't define. It doesn't make the definite, the. The distinction between a domicile and. And, you know, different, another kind of a building, a non-domicile building. It just says that those have to be permitted anyway, right? Is that what you read it or how you read it? I don't, so.
Excuse me. May I say something?
Why?
It's not just a couple vacant properties. You're impacting fifteen-plus households, fifteen-plus properties that now have to say they non-conform. It's not just a couple people, you're talking about forty, fifty people. Talking about two percent of your citizen base that you're impacting by this. I just wanna make sure that we're not just saying it's one or two people and. It's not important.
Right.
Eric, if you're surprised by something Shannon brought up, the cost of building the water and cost more. When you're presenting twenty-five million, you included an inflationary factor in it, correct?
Correct.
For that twenty-five million dollars case consideration, inflation is always time. So it's not gonna be twenty-five plus more.
The issue I, for me, Mike, I guess personally is that. That piece of ground is more valuable than citing a, you know, we're talking about. Twenty-nine hundred and eighty people with a very limited. Area. That's suitable for expansion to bring any more housing or anything like that in, which. Every employer in the city of Amory, I think, would be unanimous as far as. We need more housing. If we're going to attract more industry. We have to have a place that longer maintain industries we have, including the health facilities. Which is, I know, a significant issue for for. Staff to come in is where are they gonna live if they come to Amory? And the answer is, we don't have any place for them to live, period. I mean, you can pluck pieces here and there, but there are no. No real places for people to live to encourage them to come to town. So that particular piece of ground where they took the shortest route to the first open field rule that could work. And that's, you know, probably the best piece of ground to establish residential or extraterritorial zoning that. Exists around Amory. Pardon? It's not, you're correct. But but the fact of the matter is, we have extraterritorial zoning that can handle that. Bradley said they're not interested.
Not at all.
So, so, you know, that was another limited. Issue that we've talked about. You know, several places that have been talked about over the years, but nothing was ever. You know. If it was on the plan, it was used to move the station. Well, I submit to you, there was never a plan, it was all talked about. Just like I'd like to buy a jet, you know. Exactly. So. Well. Tomato, tomato. It's not, if there was, it didn't happen, you know. So I. I think, you know, that that's just, just, you know, personal aside, if we're willing to expand. And there was, there's a owner down there that has a plan to expand at least some part of that land. We're kinda strapped for places to do that kind of stuff. Now you're talking about going further. Away, because that was a close, a close piece there that that would suffice. If you go further away, you know, it would deal with more landlords to go across the property. There are maybe some, some places to do that. But it's all, all that has to be part of a decision that's that's made to. Either stay in one location or. You know, incur the costs and go to another location. Basically, going north is out of the question. And going west is out of the question. And going east is out of the question because we have swamps, you know. Real issues as far as getting it up, so. So. So what's your problem?
Well, my pleasure would be to leave it where it is, the existing plant. And do the upgrade right where it is. From, from the financial aspect of it. There are multiple people or properties involved, and we'd have to work with them on an individual basis. If they want to sell their property, we wouldn't offer them. And that property would become the city's, and it would just be. The old as is.
I'm not in favor of moving it to another location. I think it's too cost prohibitive, and we need to act on this now. We have no place to put it. And to be talking about some. Place that. I mean, the. There's no place within the city limits to put it. And. I don't think we have any place close. That's going to be willing to sell their property for a reasonable amount of money. And we would end up having to work with other. Partnerships, and I know that that's not. That's not part of it on their side, so I am not in favor of moving it in place else. I am.
My biggest concern with moving it is not just acquisition of property, but it's the timeline. We're pretty much on borrowed time at this point. And I can't see us stretching this out. It would be more likely five years is my guess. Because it's, the forced main would take a route that would have to go if whichever property is gonna take time to put in place, getting the permitting, the. Being able to do condemnations or whatever we have to do to do all those things besides acquiring property. The least problematic is to leave it where it is. I think that the cost estimate of twenty-six million or whatever it was is probably also. Low, just a. Because of all the other things that have to happen. Um, based on your guess, I understand that's, you have to use real numbers, but. I have to believe it's going to cost more than that. So I don't see a place that can go that's better than where it is.
Michaela?
Um, I'm gonna echo Eric in a lot of ways. My primary concern with this is time. Um, this has been going on since I joined the council, um, and there's a part of me that's frustrated that. The city let it get to the point that it is now where we're backed into what I feel is kind of a corner as far as time goes. Um, I do believe we're on borrowed time and I, I sympathize with the people that live. Um, live there and I think that we need to work with them to come up with something that's agreeable. Um, and fair. However, that plant has been there a long time. So the people who have bought those properties in recent years. Were aware that that plant was going to be there. Um, so a, at this point, I, I don't think we have the choice to move it just because of the time and the cost, um. Because we have to do what's best for the whole and sometimes that means that. Some of our citizens aren't going to get the best shake, um, but I think what's best for everyone is keeping it where it is.
Considering everything, pretty much what Michaela had said, I agree with everything, time constraint, um. And I do, we do feel for the people that live in this area, but we do have to look at the whole picture of Amory and what's best. And my feeling, just my gut feeling is that we would, if we would locate it to decide to locate it to another location. I have a feeling that the cost is going to go up a lot more than what it's already quoted at. It's just, just with inflation and everything. So. I vote to keep it at the existing location.
Well, for, for one thing, you know. I think the comment was that it impacts about two percent of the, the population. Adding ten million to the price tag impacts everybody. And, and we're talking, and I'm trying to do, I don't know. The quick math on it, but it's somewhere between eight hundred to fifteen hundred dollars per taxpayer. Um, and so, um, you know, they, they. You know, if the cost was close, it's one thing, but it, you know, ten million dollars is a lot of money. Um, and, and I think there are solutions with the individual homeowners that are impacted by this. Uh, but it'd, it would be a lot less costly to work things out with them. I, I truly believe that, so.
I would skip on this if I wanted, but I, I, well, I agree with, you know, the council. I think that, uh. That we've been, you know, at this, if we truly were planning ahead. Like we probably should have twenty-five years ago, like ninety-five, when, when these documents were written. Is when the plan should have started to build and I firmly believe that. If the city council approves this today, that tomorrow we should begin planning on a new sewer plant. Twenty-five years from now, someplace else. Uh, that's planning ahead. You know, the old hack is when you're up your butt in alligators, it's hard to remember that the original dying thing was to drain the swamp. Um, but we need to start thinking about draining the swamp. Twenty-five years from now also. And I, I agree with the rest of the council. If there's a twenty-five million dollar estimate, I believe wholeheartedly that will be on the low side.
Well, I'm frankly concerned about the sixteen million dollar estimate at this point.
Yes, that, that.
Just gonna say it out loud.
That's the, the estimate is to, that's gonna bring our sewer costs per average family unit from. Three hundred roughly to twelve hundred and some dollars.
I will also say there's not one person that talked to me that was in favor of moving it elsewhere. So, say that as well. That would be my assumption, um.
I don't think that's done on a percentage basis. I think there's just one flat.
This is information from two years ago, three years ago almost. So things have changed. There's going to be additional of funds that are going to probably be available and that's, you know, obviously, of course we're going to do that. We're trying, we do that with every project that we have.
But I think the state of Wisconsin, it's a flat two million that they'll.
Or the clean water fund and other things.
So the, the, it is a percent basis, but it's capped right now at two point one million for principal forgiveness.
Right.
Um, now there's other, the, the other program that, and, and so Baldwin was a rural development project. Um, we did look at rural development as a funding option, um, in facility planning right now. Just with the, the funding climate, the, the, um. Uh, infrastructure monies are flowing largely through the clean water fund so that. That two point one million is increased from what used to be seven hundred and fifty thousand where that grant was, was capped. And that's what made, in some cases, made rural development more attractive. Right now. Rural development is, is generally not offering as much, um, principal forgiveness or grant as clean water fund is offering. Now, the other avenue that we could, could look at, um, is, um. C D B G funding can be paired with the clean water funding. Um, which would potentially be another, um, up to million dollars in, in grant funding. The trouble is that the timeline of it, we, we would submit for C D B G funding this May. Um, which, which we could certainly do. We wouldn't find out on that funding until August or September. Would mean we wouldn't be able to bid the project until this fall. But if that's an avenue that we want to pursue, that's certainly an option that, that we can look at.
And it should be noted to the, the C D B G program requires that you have, um. Plans available at the time of application. So it's not like we missed last year's application deadline of May. We would not have been able to apply because the plans weren't far enough along, so. If, if we were to do it, this would be the, the cycle that we would, we would hit.
There are reasons why, like you said, that's why we didn't go that route.
Still, still could, but it would, it would. Push back, but until next or to this coming.
Yeah, if you do that, then the dollars that you get would probably be eaten up and, I mean, that's only. Yeah, that's probably an eating up in inflation.
Are there any other grants out there for a project like this?
They mentioned the main ones and that's what we usually try to hit.
Right.
Well, I say we move forward with it.
Make the motion.
I make the motion that we move forward with the. Plans to build a new plant at its current location.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded to. Adopt the current location as the place for the new sewer upgrade.
Yes.
Dan Summerin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elkin.
Yes.
Plannam.
Yes.
Banner.
Yes.
They're approved.
Be prepared to pay more money. Than what they're telling you because last month proposal for renovation, we had ten million, thirteen point five. Now it's sixteen point three. In a month, eight hundred thousand dollars. And they don't know yet what they're gonna find until we have to start.
And that's gonna be true when they will build it, so it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Understand that, Mike.
On the other, it'd have been thirty-five million, so you can't play that scale.
Yep.
We're done with that topic.
If you, if it does, you know, we'll be looking for new engineers, right?
That's fine too.
Well. That, that. Good move. They won't want to get in for the big bucks at this pace. Okay.
Yep.
Item number three is an ordinance oh seven twenty twenty-three regarding blighted properties.
This is commercial property.
This is commercial.
Up at committee of the whole and, um, we updated it and made sure the changes were reflective in this ordinance.
Yeah. They didn't, we didn't publish that though, did we?
Haven't, because it's, it's not been approved, so.
Okay.
Can you just highlight the changes that we've made?
Um. We talked about the, we have to think about this now. Help me, Taylor. She, she actually.
Just for reference.
So.
Undersea.
I think the only. The only change that was made. Between the last meeting and this meeting was specifying that, um, it's the building inspector. Who does the citation, so the property owner shall have thirty days to comply as stated in the building inspector citation. So we weren't putting like a general, this is how you comply. It's based off of how the building inspector writes the citation, since each situation is different. So, so that was the only change between last meeting and this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I see that Dan and Don are, um, present. Do they have anything to contribute to this conversation or anything that needs to be added?
I don't think so, um, since we were here last, uh, last month also, um. And so I don't think I have anything else to add, but it's fine.
So they've been weighing in on this the whole time.
This was brought to committee of the home. As, as a recommendation, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero seven dash twenty twenty-three. In chapter three thirty-five, section one dash eight, prohibited for commercial properties in the city of Amory.
I would second that.
Motion's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance oh seven twenty twenty-three regarding. Blighted commercial properties in the city of Amory. All in favor, say aye. Posed. Okay. South Industrial Park Realtor Contract, Patty.
Get that again, um, and Paul, Paul Schaefer and myself had actually interviewed three separate realtors. And the one that really was very intriguing to us is a local boy. And he knows Amory quite well. Um, he was very close friends with, with Harvey Stower, his family, and it's Eric Duhome. Um, he's. Duhome, yes. And he is a commercial realtor and this is what he deals with, so, um. Paul and I were very excited about his proposal, um, was supposed to present. Kind of the points of what he is willing to do for us, but it, it's very. Very good, um, scope of work that he's planning on doing for the city. Um, he'll get out there and he's gonna put it out on, I think he said twelve, thirteen different sites. He's, he's planning on doing the advertising with a good billboard, um. He's.
Company.
Yes.
And that company is, pardon?
Terrace, terrace, terrace group. So he's, uh, like I said, he's a local boy and he's, he's there and. I don't know what you want to do with that. I know you had mentioned at the last meeting, Mike, that, you know, let's just wait till April. I mean, I don't know if you still want to do that or if you want to move forward with the commercial. That's kind of where we're at, so.
Our contract with, you know, I, the former one was, is over with. I mean, they, we've, they've signed off on. Releasing that, so we were free to do that.
No, that's, that's not correct. Uh, we have not signed off on that yet.
We didn't send that, we didn't renew.
We, we just have not renewed yet, but it's still. So we have not released them from that contract, that's kind of what.
Right, so we, we still have a realtor. Um, I guess I would like to see a proposal rather than. I, I, I completely trust what you're telling me, but.
Yeah.
I would like to see that scope of work and the, and the, the kind of reach that this particular. Uh, group has.
Told him a couple different times, but I have.
Okay.
That's kind of where it sits.
Is that concerning for Patty that you reached out and, uh, got no response?
Um. He kind of touched on some points, but he never really did a document because we're, we're in a document with someone else, so I mean, say what he's willing to do. Yes, I'm not concerned.
And does he have any, um. Areas where he's had success in. Listing and selling properties in a situation like this.
It's, it's a difficult area.
Sure is, but.
One that I talked to said the same thing. They said selling industrial lots is difficult. They said it's just the market, it's, it's a hard sell. Usually if you have something onsite, it's easier, which we don't.
Something on site. Oh.
Don't have that. Those sell quickly, but we don't have.
We have done that before, the, the M R L. Put up that building back when I first started here.
I mean. It's just, it's the nature of it, right?
You know, you had mentioned in the past, uh, a few meetings prior that. Uh, you had brought up the possibility of looking at logging or trying to clear some of the area out to make it more. Um. Advised or more presentable for current or future owners. That, that may be something that we could look at too.
There's no magic pill. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Document that Kerry Dean signed.
He doesn't, he brought it to me and I didn't sign it because I put it on the agenda and that was never, we never signed off on it yet.
And why didn't we? It's an expired.
So that's why we haven't done.
When does it expire?
Rick, I think last meeting I had said that I would prefer that we wait until we have something in place before we sign off on it, just so that we don't have like dead air. For the property.
That's kind of what I think.
Yeah, if we signed a release right now, we could list, we could go with another real estate agent.
Right. We can. In with this one if we wanted to.
There would not be a time that we're without a realtor.
Think so.
That they have, that Kerry had, had, uh, that would have showed interest in it. Typically, submit those names to you and if a new guy comes in and one of those names buys it, they get their commission anyway.
And they'll still be part of the sale.
Yeah, right.
But it doesn't sound like, uh, timing is really of the essence here. You know, I mean, as far as. Sales.
No, I think the time, you know, is not necessarily accepted, you know? We've, uh, I don't think we've had any action on those lots at all, so.
Commercial, I mean. But it's, it's a tough market right now. They all, they all said.
They're, we're doing nothing right now. If we're, we don't have any interest in any lots, let's, let's make a change, I think. And get some new blood in and see if they've got some other.
Four months away, that's
I really want to see a scope of work. I want to see a proposal.
You do too.
You know, I I I I'm I'm sure that he will, would accomplish what he said he would do, but I I think, I think also that we can see what's, what's planned.
Yeah.
That's what I'm waiting on.
Can we have, could we possibly have that for that, the next meeting? Right, for him to
Like I said, I reached out to him a couple times, so. You're watching.
Certified survey map application to create lots uh, in two oh one, zero zero three seven one to grant access past the end of Center Street West.
It says, you know, was brought to plan commission. Made a, made a motion to approve the certified survey.
So it requires us to extend the I think, was it, will city not be required to extend the sewer to the second buildings?
Jeff, I don't think that was
I don't think they would be usually on that. It's the
We got the sewer there, but if those are four individual lots, or is there any
See, if they're doing a development, they will go on to what we have.
Okay. Okay. This is recommended by by planning, um, and he's putting all the money into it, so I don't know that we have, I don't approving the certified survey map. There's no, no financial responsibility to the city, so.
No.
He'll start with the developer.
This is, this is just changing this only, but but um, just so that the rest of the council knows the rest of that discussion, this is, this is the property that uh, the Center Street West runs across, it can go across to Lake Street behind the memory care unit. And it's probably something that we should be looking at in the future that we would actually go, go through there as a city, just so that there's no turnarounds for the, like Brick pointed out when we were talking about. You don't have turnarounds for snowplows and things like that, so.
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks and stuff like that. You think fire trucks, I think.
Yeah. So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to get that
Of the survey man.
Approve that, approve that survey man, the certified survey.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the certified survey map application to create the lots uh, and grant access past the end of Center Street West. And for your discussion?
Use myself from this fault. I'm going to recuse myself from this fault.
Ah, okay. Note that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Noted that Sarah was excused, recused. Item number six, certified survey map for Jordanson Field, um. This is the part that's, that straightens the curve out.
Mm-hmm.
And that was uh, brought up by um, planning commission, recommended by planning commission. Uh, moving forward, this will get a, a signature from Unisource to change that uh, from what the document shows to what actually exists there, which is a straight road that goes through there. Rather than one with a hook in it, so.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the certified survey map for the property formerly known as Jordan formerly, it is known as Jordanson Field, not formerly, form, formerly. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Is this where you would want to have a reading of that? Um, vacation, because it's not
You can, but that, but you approved it during the consent agenda portion of
Yeah, but the, the part of it is that we, is the city has, is going to be vacating that curved portion so that it squares off the property.
So we're working on that process right now with our city attorney to work on the vacant portion of that that road. But in order to do that, it's a lengthy process. We have to have hearings, we have to notify all the mayors and deliver all those types of things. So um, we should have more discussion.
Which is probably all right, because uh, item number seven will be, will have to be tabled. Um, the school has to have an agenda and hold an electors meeting in order to legally purchase the property, so um, so we're looking out on it. Same page, we gotta
Cross the teeth, right?
On the agenda, but I just heard from the uh, supervisor today. And um, he said that the attorney said that they have to have a meeting with the electors. But just before the meeting, so, so we're not acting on that portion of
Okay. Which gets us to item number eight, closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent G. Building zoning permitting discussion regarding one forty two Lake Street for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for a governmental body who is rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, which it is or is likely to become involved. And Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C. Clear treasure position considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
Make motion to go on closed session.
I second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Who will call vote?
Marks?
Yes.
Dan Summer and
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Dan Blair?
Yes.
Hawken?
Yes.
Plannum?
Yes.
Yes.
We're in close, roll call. We're back in open session. Roll call has been taken. And now we are entertaining a motion.
I move to engage Baki Norman for um, the litigation necessary to um, take care of the citation and non-compliance issues with the property at
One forty two Lake Street.
Forty two Lake Street.
And I will second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to uh, hire Baki Norman to represent us uh, in pending litigation at one forty two Lake Street. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Served.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adjourn? Or adjourn?